Okay, we'll call the November Council meeting to order. It is very close to six o'clock. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It appears that we have all of our council members in place, so that will call all of us here. Therefore, we can proceed with city governance. Please silence your electronic devices. And then, we will move on to item number five, and that is additions or approval of the agenda.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, please proceed, Mr. Boating.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I could please ask to amend under consent agenda a resolution of 2020-47, refuse caller license to remove GFL Solid Waste Midwest LLC. From that resolution, there are some issues we need to iron out, and we can take it up next month.
And then, that acronym again, remove which?
GFL Solid Waste Midwest.
DFL.
G as in George.
Oh, G, that's right. Then we got that memo circulated to us today.
Yes, sir.
Okay, GFL.
With that amendment, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I'll second that. Motion to be seconded to accept the agenda with one modification under eight G. Any other discussion? Sensing none, call the question. All of in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. No abstentions, so pass unanimous. We are now moving along into item six on the agenda, and that is donations. It would be page four of the packet, in case anyone is trying to keep up. Make a motion to approve. I will second that motion. Okay, it's been a motion to second to accept the donations, contributions for October 20, and to highlight Al's Armamental Welding and Iron, $6,000. It was refurbishing some fire department lockers. And then, there was the Luxembourg Lions Club for Rockville Fire Department for $500. You heard that? Motion, any other discussion? Sensing none, all of in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. No abstentions, pass unanimous. Okay. Number seven, approval. And then, if I deviate too far, I've had some pills and I'm not quite... That's the last one today, so it's not quite clear headed. So, please bear with me. Approval, and it was for some pain. Approval of October 2020 bills paid. Council action?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion's been made, and I heard my right side better than the left. So, Bill and Don, and we'll give you ample time to next time, buddy. Okay, so having that motion seconded, is there a discussion? Reminding that if there is a conflict of interest, please share that when we take the actual vote. Since we're ready for the vote, I'll call the question. All of in favor of that motion approving the October 2020 bills, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I'd like my...
Abstention?
To reflect that I am abstaining from check numbers 020169 and 020198.
Duly noted, and that should be in the record. Mr. Modi?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Okay, we are sort of passed with one abstention. Moving along to item number eight. There are eight through G. It's on your packet, you can go through it, but it should be...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change in G as in George, resolution 2020-47.
I'll second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda en masse with the modification of the removal of GFL Solid Waste for another time. So, Mr. Modi, if I could, that would then continue on resolutions 2020-47. Waste Management and West Central are the ones that we would be getting forward, and the other one is going to be for future deliberation.
We're approving tonight 47. You're approving West Central's sanitation, and I have not heard from Waste Management yet. But they still have another month to get me their permit. I'm going to reach out by phone and see.
Okay, so basically, with that modification that we have, as stated in the motion. Is it clear that we're voting on here? Okay, any other discussion? Sensing none, I'll call the question. All of in favor of the consent agenda en masse, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Pass unanimous. Okay, department reports. I believe the sheriff's report was in our packet. There's no quarterly history that comes in, but...
Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Hamish, sent an apology. He is quarantined, so he's going to be here first.
Well, it's the proper thing to do, okay? So, we wish him well. And then, Fire Department.
Fire Chief had a conflict tonight, and I made him aware. I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if he's been here once a quarter. He certainly tries. I'm the one that asked department directors to come. So, if he hasn't been here, that would be my... But I reach out to him every month and ask him if he's got something to report. But I know you'd like to see him, the public likes to see him. I think he's one of the very few departments in city government that I'd love to love.
Okay, so if we could, and then, that's from your perspective. I think they all are, it's just a different matter.
Some of them are, some others not.
And then, to that end, if you would strongly urge that, at least for year-end, written or visually, or some of that for next month. I think you're right on. Fire Department's our heroes in our community, along with others, but particularly, they have an annual wrap-up that we prefer to suggest. Planning, Bill, please proceed.
I have one report to do tonight. Under C number two, the impervious surface will be addressed through the approved stormwater management plan. So, it would be just number one, resolution 2020-43, which is assigned variance for Love's Travel Stop. The variance request is construct a 1,200-square-foot sign at a height of 150 feet. The property is zone B2. Purpose is to advertise the plaza itself. Total acreage is approximately 16 acres. Property was anned in the city of Rockville in June of '18. It's going to be water sewer connection. There's 12 public hearing notices were mailed out. We did hold a public hearing. Nobody spoke against this variance. It was unanimous that the variance was approved by the planning commission.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from the planning commission. What's the wishes of the council?
Just a clarification, wasn't it 900 square feet, not 1,200?
I think 12 was max.
What are we dropping off now?
The overall size.
900 square feet, what they amended down to 900.
Okay, thank you, I'll correct that then later.
Okay.
And... 600.
And so, to that end, on cue, as the gentleman walking through front door this evening is making his spot in a seat. Welcome, Frank. To that point, Bill, any other comments, questions?
No, there was a lot of discussion. Good discussion. We had our attorney there. I clarified some of the questions that we're asking. Love's Travel Plaza was there, who's here now. And we were promoting that it's approved.
Okay.
I went through the all that's here inside. One thing I saw there, the sign, if I had stood there and read the sign, we put up on a base, see if it went there, power line, powers went through. Am I correct on that? You put big...
Mono.
On a pole, you're meant filling with... To hold a pole, right?
Oh, yes.
That's what I... And I think that's a good way of doing it. That's going to be very sturdy that way.
That's all engineered, based on the geotechnical soils testing and the size of the and weight of the sign, so.
Okay. And so, we'll try to keep the dialogue down to our council to act on this, if we could. And so, the resolution 2020...
Make a motion 40.
I made a motion to approve resolution 2020-43.
Okay, I'm aware you're...
Okay, I'll say it.
We're in City Ward here. We all want to make the...
I was at the planning commission, man, so I hear all pros and cons, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, very good. So, motion by Brian, seconded by Jerry. Is that appropriate? And continued discussion, and that is for the resolutions 2020-43, signed variance, Love's Travel Stop. So, any other comments, questions? If not, I'll call the question. All of in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Abstentions, none, pass unanimous. And we'll have a second here. Anything else, Bill, on that next one?
I don't have anything else, but I sue as here. And one of the questions was about economics and...
Oh, on the... What's it called? Economic...
Economic benefit.
And a couple of us were looking, and I was one of them, that told me that this place is going to create financial status. And we were looking at it wrong. Do you just want to clarify that? Sure. What I instructed the planning commission is, you look at it from the standpoint of what... Why is the applicant asking for this variance? Is it for economic reasons alone? Well, you know, anybody who's improving commercial property, they want economic gain, but that's not how you look at it. You look at why specifically are they asking not to comply with the ordinance? Is it because they're trying to save money in their development? And that's not the case. And in this case, they're actually going to be spending quite a bit of money on this sign. So, that's the way you look at it. Is, are they trying to avoid the city's requirements merely because they find them costly?
Thank you.
And that's a great point, Bill. To that end, I think the motion's been made and seconded. Did we already pass it, or did we call for a question?
Yes, you did.
We did, we're done. Okay, well, I'll take a moment at this point representing the city of Rockville, and I hope that the council members all agree. Frank, welcome to Rockville. And if you can convey that to the Love's family. It's wonderful to be able to say the Love's Travel Plaza, we kept it under, you know, it was always called the Travel Plaza, but now we can put a actual name to it. Extremely, extremely proud of the fact that we have an anchor out there in that thing. And so, welcome and convey that, if you would please, from the citizens and the leadership and the guidance and the governance team of the city of Rockville. Welcome, welcome to Rockville. To that, also, along, we're on Mr. Harstead, who has worked feverishly to get it. And some of us, marketing before you were even here, Mr. Harstead was up and chatted with the council. So, this has been a long, long period of time, or something like that, to get a major anchor into there. So, this is a gateway to a lot of commercial, retail, diversified housing out there. So, it's huge, it's extremely huge. So, we should not be, we could not be prouder. And I hope that we all five are in agreement with this. The planning and zoning that worked so hard to get that to this point, the city council, the staff, rather, engineers, everyone. So, I take my hat off to each and every one of you guys that were involved, and we are looking forward to a continuation. So, Frank, apologize if you came all the way up here. There's not a lot of fanfare in this world, but that shouldn't have been the last impediment that we had, so that you should be able to go forward, at least from the perspective of the city of Rockville, as I understand.
Well, thank you, yes. And I'm never late to these things, but I-94 is closed for about 10 miles, and there were about 5,000 of us that were late to whatever we were doing. No, but I really appreciate it, and we are excited about this location. I don't know if I've said this in any public hearings, but I've been, I've been looking for a Love's location on this corridor, the Twin Cities, out to this area, on I-94, for about 10 years. And I've had two different ones under contract before, and they failed for whatever reason. And so, it's, it's very gratifying to finally have one come to fruition, so. And you'll be, you'll be very happy with your decision when we build. You'll, you'll be proud of our facility, and we are. It'll do good business, and we'll keep it clean, and hopefully, other things will come in around us.
I didn't like the price on that sign that you had in the picture.
What was it?
Bring that down a little bit.
What was the price?
I don't know, 30 something.
But it used to be like $1.29, everything, saying, "Keep that price there."
To that end, there's one other important ingredient that I think that will continue, and that is the Highway 23 Coalition. And that's a lot of businesses and mayors, council members, county commissioners, that were trying to get four lane from St. Cloud to Wilner. And that bonding has gone through for both the business of wave 2022 and the second half of 2023. And the reason why, I serve on the legislative committee of that, going to the state level. This was monumental, to have something along the line. And this truly will help that process, you know, to get the long-term goal for a corridors for commerce designation at the federal level, from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, all the way to the port of entry in Duluth. Obviously, a lot of us won't be around when that happens, but this is part of that. And this is a major, major intersection, and that becomes four lane all the way from Sioux Falls. Reason for that is because designation of corridors for commerce, and you can get that federal funding for the part of transportation, rather than strictly at the state. There's never enough money to go around, but a bigger piggy bank to work with. And so, Love should be, make the right decision by that corner, no doubt about it, and I'm looking forward to it. To that end, safe journey back to Oklahoma, find another route back if you don't have all that traffic or something like that.
Eastbound is open, westbound is closed.
Oh, okay. But comments or...
I have one question of the citizens' seat of this one here. Is you have a rough timetable, let's say, when this was construction, the start of that would be complete. So, people are going to ask that, myself, anybody here, you know, let's say...
We have a 25... We have a finite construction window up in this part of the country, so.
Yes.
I would guess it'll start in April or May, whenever the ground is ready.
Yep.
And it will open up before Christmas.
Of 2021? That's great news, that's great news. Other comments or questions from the council members or...
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
We can open up in January if things happen, but.
Right. Mr. Modi, I give you the opportunity, how you've worked with it and all of that.
Oh, I thought you were going to go on the next item. I don't know, I don't know if I could express it better than you did, Mr. Mayor, on staff and citizen, as council. This is huge for Rockville.
Yes.
It's huge. And Mr. Hill, if I could formalize it like that, we really appreciate what you're doing and bringing the Love's family and Love's Travel Plaza to Rockville. This is, this could be engaging.
And if you see Mr. Harstead, or between now and next step, I believe he wanted to be here, but had another commitment or something like that, so convey that to him, if you would please, that we are extremely proud of how he worked thus far, getting a superb anchor into there, and looking forward to working with him in future segments of that gateway to... Cool.
Mr. Mayor, I feel like you're going to segue it on, if I could have...
I am, but it looks like it's short, and this should be non-controversial here, so we should continue. So, what did you have, my friend?
If I could, Mr. Mayor and Council, if council member Vector would allow me to address him as chairman, Vector, planning commission. I put this resolution for the impervious surface because we did receive an application, and it was after planning commission that I delved into a little further. We need to address the application. And what this resolution does, it authorizes it per our ordinance. As long as he has a city storm sewer management plan in place, he can go, he can exceed the impervious surface. But nevertheless, I have an application for impervious surface variance that I need to either approve or deny. So, I'm asking to approve it per our ordinance. We're not giving anything, we're just, I would ask the council action to approve it. It's item three, is right out of our ordinance of that resolution.
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I have to...
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
I'll second it. And so, this, if it conveys that impervious soil, Bill works closely with that watershed district, day in and day out. And so, if he gives it the motion, which should be in order. So, I go with that. Any other discussion? Sensing none, I'll call the question in this resolution number 2020-44. And I'll call the question. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Pass unanimous. To that end, though, there will be a plan, Mr. Modi, correct, that has the impолнment of water and all that established, it's just a matter of formality, sizing, shaping, and some of that. An engineer will be involved and give it blessing. Thank you. We are moving along again to emergency management. And I think that will just an FYI at this point. Anything that we...
I don't think there was anything brought up.
Nothing that was brought up. Anyone of the... All of them, just give it a moment here, it's going to let the fanfare simmer down. Everybody's still joyous about the fact that Love's Travel Stop is now officially in the Rockville.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Modi, do there anything that we have in emergency management?
No, sir, he'll be here in December.
Very good. Engineering, the Schneider development, there are several that allude to, go circulated into the packet, it's page 241, and it, I believe, is a major reduction in the amount of the... So, who's going to carry this? Is that you and Justin?
Yeah, I can do that. Mayor, Council, all public infrastructure items have been completed on the Schneider Farm Development. Final inspection was completed, a bunch list was created, and a bunch list has all been taken care of. So, with that, we would recommend that the city council accept the public improvements, which consist of the roadway and ponding and a few culverts along there. And then, a two-year warranty period would begin on November 1st, 2019, which is the date that basically everything was completed, plus the wear course. There was an agreement that we would go ahead and start the warranty period in the fall, and the wear course was put on in the spring. And then, that termination would be November 1st, 2021, for the warranty period. And the developer has indicated he would utilize his existing letter of credit for the financial security according to the development agreement. And that is 25% of the public infrastructure costs that we retain as a financial security for the warranty period. That amount ends up to be $32,262. And again, that can expire on November 1st, 2021. So, your action tonight would be to A, accept the improvements, B, reduce the letter of credit to $32,262, with an expiration date of November 1st of 2021. And then, lastly, would be upon all bills being paid that the escrow would be released back to the developer.
Okay, you've heard the report from... You're asking, are they agreed? We hear my...
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, was that supposed to be in three separate motions?
Yes, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Agreed.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the first one on the Schneider development, which is page 241.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the recommendation of our city engineer that the Schneider Farm Development is complete and in good standing, the city of Rockville relates to the development portion of it. So, any other discussion? Sensing none, I'll call the questions. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions, sensing none, pass unanimous. We will now move into number two, approve the reduction of the Schneider subdivision letter of credit.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Modi, that is a motion that was made by Jerry, seconded by Bill to accept the recommendation of the, I believe it was from our engineer and also from you, the city administrator, to have the letter of credit amount reduced to 25% of the original. And so, that will be for the balance of the contract, which would be expiring on November 1st, 2021. Any other discussion?
Got a question. I understand the deal of holding money back. What I'm having a hard time understanding this is if... The road's under warranty to Schneider, so if something fails with the road, they're the ones that got to fix it. The city isn't on the hook with any financial things. None of the project was funneled to the city. Why are we requesting for retainer that the city's holding? Nothing's coming back to the city.
What makes you think there's a warranty? Their option was a warranty bond or letter of credit. It was either or.
This is in lieu of them obtaining a warranty bond.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And it was in the developer's agreement, and...
That I'm just...
Moving it down, because the exposure is a whole lot less, you know, right now. It was going to happen the second, the second year, slim to none.
I got it, I was just...
Yep.
Just trying to clarify.
Good. Other comments as it relates to the motion that I'm... Came up? Sensing none, I'll call the question. As to approve the reduction of the Schneider subdivision letter of credit, all those who came for that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. No abstentions, pass unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Okay, thank you. Schneider subdivision escrow outstanding invoices.
I think what we're asking here, Mr. Mayor, is council approval to return the escrow amounts, all outstanding invoices are paid.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to do that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, we're voting again. Bill made a motion, and Donny seconded it. And it was, again, if you just clarify it.
To return back to Schneider's the $25,000 escrow funds, once all outstanding invoices have been paid.
Yep. Okay, so you've heard that motion. We'll call the question. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I'll pass unanimous. Thank you again. Okay, Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, you have my written report, I believe, in front of you all. The only thing I would add to it, 210, Tower Road, as some report to it, does have the two and a half inches of asphalt on it, and the shoulder has been completed this week. Hopefully, Godspeed, there won't be anything blowups in the springtime, and we won't have much to fix. That'll be the business.
And as I understand it, during the course of the car going down, there was no blowups out of any of that, based on what information I heard from you and others?
All right, good. It didn't really...[1629.74]
And I drove it almost instantly after that, and it looks flawless. We made the right choice.
Yep.
There again, Mr. Bodie, if you would care to share, maybe even you as our representative to John, thank them for reaching out to us so that we had the opportunity to have a meeting to verify that that was the right decision. So...
I know the head tells spring.
No, you're right, Gary, and you're correct, but I... I also...
Pretty now.
Yes, it does. And I think I will tell, and I think we deliberated it at length, and a lot of us learned something from an added value, and that was from the representative that was here from the...
Night River?
Night River. Did a phenomenal job of explaining that. So someday in a workshop in the future for Public Works, city administrator, oh yeah, I forgot planning and zoning and city council too. But I mean, all of this is very important for us, so we... Thanks again.
So are we going to ask Public Works to check out this holding tank versus septic for the maintenance building? Who's going to... Is that going to move forward with that?
They'll be part of the planning and specs, remember.
If the resolution goes forward, then we have Justin, and he would research that. Isn't that...
Wouldn't we like to know that before we decide? Or are we gonna go ahead with it, and then if our possibility is maybe making building a little shorter, requires some land, or... I just want to know who's going to be heading this up.
I think the engineer should be the one in part of the plans and specs.
Okay.
It was brought up, and rightly so. Brian, when you brought that forward, it's a very important ingredient to have so that when we go forward from this point, meaning the city staff and engineers, that they're cognizant of that, so thanks for sharing that with us. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, good luck on that white stuff that's coming in excellent, whatever. We're ready?
We're done, June.
We're ready, correct?
We're ready, correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Administration, resolutions 2020 dash 45 canvassing in November 3rd election. I believe there was something circulated, or do we have that in front of us, or do we...
It was... Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I put all this stuff on my desk to keep me from getting messed up if I do alonghand.
Okay. And this is the end of every other year, the canvassing of the results of the election, and that has been tabulated, formulated to the council, to the county, and Mr. Bodie got that back, and so there is a resolution 2020 dash 45.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution 2020 dash 45.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to forward resolutions 2020 dash 45. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any extensions, passed unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Resolutions 2020 dash 46, certification of 2021 tax rule, that was in your packet on page 243.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. There is a grand total of six that are sewn, and one that is a water bill that is in the mirrors. It's an annual event that happens each and every November for those. So there's a motion and a second to have these certified to the county to go against the tax. So anyways, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any extensions, none, passed unanimous. Council action, A, Marco, 75-inch council monitor. Mr. Bodie, please share with us.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this project started four and a half years ago with providing council and the chamber with monitors to go over materials in the packet. Three of the monitors are in the room. I've never pulled the trigger on the fourth monitor, which I visioned right up here, and I debate, 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 and I've talked to you on several occasions, so I finally got a quote from Marco for a 75-inch, and my computer now is deciding to do an update for Adobe, so I'm not able to bring it up. It was around $1,500. That'd be a 75-inch monitor, and I envision installing up here. I think it would be important for the council to be able to see a large enough screen that you're not straying as opposed to the small one. These three were designed for the public. Again, I've been installing, installing, and I'm just finally asking to do something. And I set aside $3,000 a year. Okay, so there's probably $12,000 in general savings for IT for this monitor. So if you want iPads someday in the future as individuals, the money is there for that as well.
Didn't we talk about this?
We did, oh.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I just think the TV is outdated. That's my personal opinion. And if you look at other city councils, whatever, you're going to... Doesn't have to be an iPad, and yes, they're for $800 some dollars, and the smaller ones are $350 or something like that. I just think a monitor of some sort that in front of us would be what I would like.
I'm probably there with you, Mr. Becker, but I know for a fact I've got for sure two councilmen, no, three, sitting at this table now that aren't too savvy on the iPad. And I've got a new one, I believe, and I'm thinking I'll turn a little bit, that would still like paper.
If I can learn the iPad, anybody can learn the iPad. This is so unique, and the important thing, and you stole my question, and that is, do we have the funding for it? That's the most important part. So if we do have funding, so we go one or the other.
You can do all. There are many times when even the monitor will exceed the iPad.
Marty, can I ask you a question? So if we had the iPad, you control the monitor, so whatever is... Whatever you put the 75-inch up there, you're the one that's controlling that.
That's right.
So if we have iPad here, you're not controlling it. We gotta look through it ourselves. My understanding can be both ways, but I envision you controlling your own each iPad. You'll have a council packet, you'll bring it each item up, just like I think Dwayne and Billy are doing now.
And what he's showing on there is in our backyard.
No, I know that, but it's sometimes it's kind of nice to be able to follow along for you.
You can do that.
Well, I know, but...
Modernize yourself.
Nice, okay, here we go. You're right.
You're dating me now.
I know. Okay. We're in the seventh inning, and we're in the sixth. No.
I'm telling to lean to the iPad myself. The only reason, and I know there was discussion about taking a light down, and personally, I'm not in favor of taking a light down, and I'd rather move it over a little bit, but then you've got a height thing, you've got somebody that could be a six-foot-six person, they might have a head issue, so it's just...
There's already head knockers over there.
Pardon me? We're seating when I'm asking. How are you getting into the day today?
I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move, then we go to some sort of iPad monitor, not the TV.
I'll second that motion too.
Okay.
And I took you four years, but you finally made a good decision.
Oh, boy. Now, let's be continued. You're never going to discuss at the beginning of your workplace. So by reading the council correctly, I sense that its council action of the 75-inch council monitor is not a high priority for the current seated group that's here.
Well, you made the motion for iPad, because I'm fine. If you allow me to follow up, if that only prevails, I have a question for you.
And that is that if we ask, it should take council action then to suggest to our administrator that we do not proceed with the 75-inch council. That would be a motion, it would be in order at this point?
Well, maybe.
I already made it.
Boy, make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, somebody seconded it over there. Okay, so that's what we have, we're voting on that right now.
iPads.
Okay.
On iPads.
The motion is to approve...
Approve iPad.
Deny the 75-inch council monitor.
No, no. No, the motion is to iPad, to go to iPad.
No, I don't agree with that. The motion was to approve the iPad and not the TV.
Right. Oh, it's one or the other. Okay.
Well, it can be both. You've got the funds, I'm not saying wasting it. I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna miss out on some presentations with just the iPad, but that's fine. I meant to start, you can always change your mind.
Yes.
Yes. I follow up question on Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Call the question.
And before I do that, if we haven't druthers, the iPads historically are smaller, and I need lots of space, and so if I can continue to use my own, assuming that this goes forward, is that...
That's my follow-up question. You wait till I get there.
Okay. So it does have precedence, or precedence in terms of how I would vote. It's mandated that I have to use the little mini one or something like that.
It is not mandated, Dwayne.
There you go, Dwayne. Dwayne, all you gotta do is this. How big do you want it?
I got it, buddy. I got it, yep. And so to that end, I guess we're ready for a motion. The motion is on table to not go forward with the 75-inch, but go forward with the iPad. What was that one of? Is that a fair statement? Or are you gonna bind five of them automatically and they...
No, no, I'll follow up with it. His motion was to approve iPads for the council. I had a follow-up.
Very good. iPads, and it's not in a finite amount. So to that point, we do have the funding for it. I call a question. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay.
4-1, do you want me to roll that?
No, if it's clear, your records and the public record, that's what it is, not concept or something like that, but anyways, we will continue. My fear factor is that it's not gonna be used until we have money that's going to be going, so you were gonna follow up. Now, please...
So my follow-up is, do those of you who already use your own computers and iPad, do you want a city purchased one?
No.
That they're separate?
No.
I, before you say too fast, there is a public data issue if you use your personal computer proceeding.
I have a little awareness.
Okay, perfect. I will talk to each of you as individual if you want a city iPad.
Okay.
I did have another question. I lost it.
Yep. Join the grow.
Very good.
I just lost it.
Okay, well, that's a sign, so let's move along. We can always revisit this if it does not, if it's not clear or if somebody wants to change. But anyways, so that was clear for you at this moment. We're not going with a 75, and we're gonna continue with whoever wants.
I got it.
Got it. Okay. Resolution, so here we go, 11B, resolution 2020, prepare, plan, and specs, Public Works Building. We had quite an discussion on that in our workshop, and so I think we could make that fair quickly here. What's the wishes in the council?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution 2020, whatever the number is.
47.
47, prepare, plan, and specs, Public Works Building. We had a long discussion.
48, I'm sorry, 48.
That's fine.
I'll second that motion.
And that is to have Voltenberg as our engineering firm to proceed with preparing plans and specs, so we're all understanding what it is, and that's...
For a standalone building?
Well, I don't know if that's the clarity.
Well, we need to determine this resolution.
I will add that to my motion for a standalone building.
I'll second it. Did Donnie already second it?
Yeah. Well, I have an amendment.
Amendment, I'll second.
That was a better amendment.
Okay, there's a motion to have Voltenberg hired to do our preparing plans and specifications for the proposed building, Public Works Building. And any other discussion as it relates to that? And I will be voting against this, not because of the fact that I don't want to have Voltenberg, but I think we have way too much vagueness at this stage of the game yet to go. So anyways, this is democracy, so I shall call a question. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay.
Roll call vote, that you were the one nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And that again is taken care of, that's on the 4-1, passed by a 4-1. Okay. Item number 11C, resolutions 2020 something or other, amending adjusted wage certain positions. Again, we had quite a bit of discussion in workshop. What's the wishes of the council? It's on page 247.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve 2020 dash 49.
49.
49, amending wage with certain positions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Go second.
Okay.
Is that the positions of the, for the election judges and...
Yes.
It's on the screen, Jerry.
This agenda or this resolution is for election judges, head judges, temporary law operators, seasonal part-time omitting the wire code enforcement and disposition and the temporary septic system position as key employees. I'd like to take the liberty of seeing if we can carve out that COLA for separate discussion, if that's permissible by the majority of the council.
I would vote no on that.
Okay.
Okay, so you would be asking for a friendly amendment, then, right?
Because if we don't go and cut it out, we don't have a choice but to go and vote the whole thing up or down.
Well, you can discuss the item, the COLA is what the concern is, so I think during council discussion, you can call votes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, disengaging the game to take resolutions 2020 dash 49 en masse, is that correct? And that would include the 3% COLA for all para-eligible employees?
I believe that was the motion.
Yes, that's the motion, and there was a second. Okay, discussion. And so I shared at the workshop, and others did too, but yet this was prepared by our administrator for a 3% COLA along with the other ones. I have no problem with the election judges, head judges, the adjustment for the seasonal maintenance, but I do have a major concern about 3%. Talked about at length about there, the public addressed us prior to about the increase in the COLA. So I will have to vote against the whole thing, not because of the election judges and that, but because of the COLA. So if it would be possible, I'd like to make an amendment to adjust that COLA to 1.5 to be more in line with where a lot of the other communities are at at this stage of the game, and see if I get a second.
I would second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjust the COLA portion of it to 1.5. Discussion on that.
I just want to go back and reiterate what the council did maybe five years ago when the city council had to reevaluate the wages for the city staff because of the years that the COLA wasn't put in, and then all of a sudden the city had to do a one big bump, and it made it look like everybody got these huge raises, and there was fallout with that. And we've been told numerous times, even last year, when we looked at raising the property taxes to 19%, that, well, why did you do a little bit out of time? Well, here we're doing a little bit out of time. So let's just continue with a little bit of a time and not have this big whammy when it hits us six more years down the road, because that's exactly what's gonna happen, and you know it's going to, because history's there to support that. That's my two cents.
I agree.
Other comments? And this is on the addendum, on the amendment, not on the main motion, but on the amendment that we're discussing, and that is...
That is correct, yes.
And that's proposed change from the 3% to the 1.5. Any other discussion? Sensing none, I'll call for the motion to amend the amendment first that we're gonna be calling before we go into the main motion. So I call a question of the one and a half percent COLA adjustment. All those in favor of that amended amendment, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I see dissension in the ranks. Mr. Bodie, please proceed with roll call vote.
On the question to amend the main motion to change the 3% COLA to 1.5, member Tippel?
Yes.
Member Becker?
No.
Mayor Willenbrink?
Yes.
Member Simon?
No.
Member Herbert?
No.
That motion veils on a 3-2, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you've heard that motion to amendment fail. We go back to the main motion as it stands. We will now, any other last discussion as it relates to the resolution as presented? Sensing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay.
Nay.
If I could roll this, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call again, please.
On the motion to approve resolution 2020 dash 49, amending adjusted wage certain positions as presented, member Tippel?
Nay.
Member Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Willenbrink?
Nay.
Member Simon?
Yes.
Member Herbert?
Yes.
That motion prevails, 3-2 vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you've heard that, that prevailed on a 3-2 vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Continue. We are now into Eagle Park Report, 11D. It's a FYI only, it's in the packet, 248. What's...
Mr. Mayor, if you wanted, I brought it up on the screen, I don't know if the public had a chance, if you wanted to summarize it, or somebody did, that would be great. This is John, we know volunteers and what their summary of what they did.
Historically, every fall, there is a concerted effort of volunteers to go forward to work in a nature park, and there's a nature park and trail advisory group that does some boing, and there's some accolades given to Mr. Gross, and it's in your packet, there's a number of them that are great volunteers out in that portion of our great city, and that's the nature park. So I believe it doesn't take anything that we need to do as a council action, but certainly wanna thank those folks that are involved in that. Buck torii removal has always been a big portion this time of the year. I think that should wrap it up, and even though some want to make any comments as it relates to this.
I just wanna add a thank you to all the people that work out there, and donate their time to make that hard, because beautiful places it is, it's just amazing how many people go out there and walk this path.
I have another comment to that, I think when you look at this, the people that are doing, I don't wanna be, let's say, I don't know how the word is, but are eligible. Most people are doing this, a lot are more, are close to retirement age, so that I think we get with more people that are gonna be community next 30 or 40 years, come all help with maintaining this stuff, not just, you know, like pets, and so they're all, plenty of people are, you know, retirement age, who they like doing it, but I think we need more, a new breed of people come in, so to speak, to keep it going.
I did it, those comments. Gone right on. You know, citizen engagement is gonna be a crucial, crucial thing for us in our community, and this is a great way of doing it, is working on volunteering. Okay, no council action is needed on that one, we will go into council action workshop, and that is item 249 on our packet.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is, I need council authority to move money out of the Parkland Dedication Fund 202, and move that to Recorri Trail Fund, one, to balance that fund, and two, to make a payment to Recorri Trail Construction Board of $5,000.
My wish is that a council, and the $5,000.
What's the $5,000 for?
It's a portion of the engineering fees for phase three of the Recorri Trail that will not be project covered. It'll be covered by the three cities.
Right. If I understand the budget right. Twenty numbers going through my head.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, thank you.
It's a number I put in there every year. So far, we've been fortunate in Rockville, we covered those funds with Parkland Dedications, but if we fall short, we'll have to ask council help from the revenue.
And that's for the gap, the last 2.4 miles from beyond where Gary is until cold spring, that gap, and everything was stalled this year. We thought that was gonna be happening late this fall and next spring to finish that up with the bonding not coming through at the state level. You know, 2020, I think a lot of people are gonna say, let's just get that year out of the way and start from scratch again and go further, and so this is a continuation, and we had a Recorri Trails Construction Board meeting, I'll make this quick, and that was that there are certain soft costs that will not be redeemable through grants from the federal cap funding or from the bonding, and so rather than to just stop that, it's a little bit funding, all three cities are at, should be at that point for cash flow, and I think that's wrapping up. Marty, or anything else that you had from the meeting that you feel that?
Well, other than I was accused of being getting up on the wrong side of the bed.
Well, yeah, but that's the nature of it, based on Thursday morning.
So you know, I get a little cranky too when this money comes out of our dollars as opposed to project. The project is covered mostly by state grants, this doesn't happen to fall into that category.
I will go ahead and move that, this be approved for transfers or not.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Okay, great, motion's been made and seconded here to the left to advance that, and I voted against this, that the Recorri Trails, it's all that. I think that for about a thousand is the minimum that we needed to have, and Mr. Modi and I both spoke, he is a staff and myself is a voting member, we lost on that one on a quarter to, and two people that voted against it were city council members, one from another community and one from myself, but that's democracy at work, we have $5,000, there's a motion on the table, so we will call the question. All those in favor of that motion to transfer that $5,000 from city to Recorri Trails Fund, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
On her same sign, passed unanimous. Okay, Craig, City Cable Report.
It's in your packet, Mr. Mayor, I have no.
It has, it's FYI, there's a report from the year our two representatives have been there, and it doesn't take council action, it's a unique way for us as council members to realize that we are one-third of the great city cable owners of the one-third, and their staff is reporting to us their deliberations for the year, and doesn't take council action, we have our representatives that are there. So anyways, I believe that takes care of our agenda. What's the wishes of the council?
To adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded to adjourn, it's not debatable, although in favor of that motion, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Motion is adjourned.